Nothing. They are just base. No equipment in them, no anything. They went up eleven thousand dollars in price and eighteen thousand dollar difference from when we originally budgeted this. So even if we were to stay with the same rotation we have now, we can't, we, there's no physical way to afford it. On top of that, since two thousand and sixteen, when we, when we kind of got the ball rolling on this, we have now additional four deputies on the road that obviously weren't accounted for in the rotation back then. So we have twelve vehicles. That does not include our jail vehicles, detectives' vehicles, or the sheriff, or my vehicle. We're talking rotating just the patrol cars that are out of the road every day getting the miles and, and, and wear and tear put on them. Trying to rotate those and keep them as safe and, and reliable as humanly possible. And at the same time, trying to keep mileage to a, to a point that a warranty is still in effect that tables the cost of, of any expensive, big repairs that we have. So we're kind of running into a wall here because we're at the point now where we just, we can't afford the vehicles at the price they pay anymore. Now we're looking at roughly fifty-six thousand dollars for a, for a police car, which I completely agree with everybody. Sitting up there is astronomically ridiculous.
I'm gonna ask you something. I, I don't, I think I already know the answer, but I assume we're utilizing whether it's GSA or state pricing mechanisms?
It's getting lower than the, I, I have, I have always gotten lower than the state QPA. I've been getting government incentives and a few other deals I've been able to work with, with the auto dealer. Just for instance, we've had a couple of vehicles that they, they put some lights and things in from the factory and took them to trade shows. And so I waited two months for those vehicles. I basically said, hold those for me. I want them. They would take them to trade shows, bring them back. We'd get them with four or five hundred miles on them, just drive time from the trade shows, and they'd knock five grand off the price for them. So I was able to do that several times. But the government incentives, they get less every year and the price goes up every year. So I have not, of course, as a matter of fact, this year, I was told anyway, even if I was to call today and order vehicles for, stopped the, they no longer take, they're no longer taking orders for two thousand and twenty-three, they won't be available again until two thousand and twenty-four, which typically because they're refueling the factory, because they're changing something in the vehicle, which is bad news for us because that means equipment doesn't transfer new vehicles anymore. So right now for, which is what we typically have been getting, the fours are off the table because we just can't get them anyway. And if we did, they're forty-eight thousand dollars per unit, base with nothing in them. And I've, I mean, we've, we've explored, I mean, right now, basically for police rated vehicles, we're talking Dodge Daringos, Ford Explorers, Dodge Chargers, F-150s and Dodge Rams. Chevy Tows are out there, but they're astronomically expensive and we can't even consider those. So in the ballpark of what we're looking for, the Dodge Chargers are more expensive than the SUVs now. The trucks are few and far between. The two trucks that we have for the Sheriff's Department that are police vehicles, those I got on a government concession that would be about six grand less than the Explorers were, so we got those. But I mean, it's, it's every year trying to find which deal you're getting the best one on, what you can work out with. Right now, John Jones and, uh, it's, uh, appears to be about the only place we can really work to get anything and within, you know, a state QPA type of price. So, and, and it doesn't matter. I mean, the Daringo versus Explorer, I don't care. They both get the job done. That's, that's not the issue, but, yeah, sorry, Nick.
Matt, are we, what we're saying is basically instead of eighty thousand, you're looking at maybe a hundred and twelve thousand to buy two vehicles?
Well, the problem that we're running into is rotating two vehicles. We end up spending so much on maintenance because it gets them out of their warranty phase sooner. So we can't, when we buy two vehicles, in actuality, we need four per year to keep them within the warranty. So when we trade them in, they've got around a hundred thousand miles. The drivetrain is a hundred thousand mile warranty. It also, we get more value back out of that vehicle when we trade it in, instead of just giving them something that's going to fall apart. They're not going to give us any money on it.
Now, are we trading them in or using a public option?
Right now, we're doing public auction, but I have other options to present to you, yes.
So you're saying too, actually, this, this resolution isn't going to hold any water?
No, I mean, not really. So, so for the eighty thousand, I mean, ultimately, if the council said today eighty thousand's what you have to deal with, deal with, then we'll do the best we can, obviously. But we're talking, we put about thirty-five thousand miles on each vehicle a year, patrol vehicles. So if we're only rotating two vehicles out, that puts us leaving a vehicle in service for six years. If we can only get two vehicles a year, which puts them in excess of two hundred thousand miles and we take them off the road. By then, those things are shot. I mean, they are beyond shot. And a hundred, and this isn't gouging anybody, it is what it is. We live in our little cabin, whether it's our roads or it's people's terrible driveways or whatever else. I mean, these things take a beating. That's as long as it is to it. We don't have the luxury of being on an interstate all the time.
What's the mileage cap?
What's that?
What's the mileage cap on lease vehicle?
There isn't one.
That's what makes it an option now.
There isn't one. So, yeah, and also I'll let the sheriff discuss what he's been discussing with John Jones and what we've been talking about the last week or so. That's another option.
Yeah.
And since you asked, I did. We do have two vehicles, just for your information, two vehicles that are on public auction right now. Last bid I saw on them once was about twelve hundred dollars, the other was twenty-five hundred for complete transparency. The last time we sold for vehicles that were in decent shape with no mechanical issues that we knew of, I got about ten thousand per vehicle out of them. So.
So is that going to get the offers?
I think so. The, the, the online auction, especially versus the, the in-person auction we used to do at the county highway, we're getting way more off. We're selling vehicles, the ten thousand I just told you about from that last Explorer went to California. So why people want that, I don't know, but they buy them. So a lot of security companies buy them and use them for, you know, whatever they do with them. So.
So what we looked at was, are there options that we can do that helps us budget-wise to not have a multitude every year of large chunks of money? John Jones presented us with an option that many of the other counties are utilizing, which is a lease option. An option one is what you'll see there. Lease option, option number one is four vehicles per lease. Year number one would be a seventy-five thousand dollar price tag. That's one lease agreement. And you would get four vehicles for the seventy-five thousand dollars. Now that's a three-year lease. Year two would be a hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two for another four vehicles. And the third year, two twenty-six, one eighty-eight. That's with all three leases at the same time. That's what the cost is. Now, in the fourth year, lease number one is gone in the fourth year. So now you're back to, you're back to just having two leases that you're having to pay for. Plus you, we're, we're looking at every four years rotating out the administrative vehicles. That since we don't get as many mileage, it's not near as important. We can do two and we would buy that, we would do that on a purchase. Because honestly, a vehicle like mine, it would last eight years because I don't put the miles on. I go to the office and claim them at the office.
Same thing with, including our jail.
So option two's for scale because clearly we're saving the taxpayers two hundred and fifty thousand dollars by going with option one.
Right. Yeah. And then if you look at option three, which is what we do now, if we buy vehicles and then after they reach around the hundred thousand mile mark, we sell them. In a ten-year window, that's going to cost two point two six million dollars. Option one, over that same period of time, would cost one point seven. So about six hundred thousand dollar difference between the, those two options alone. Option two, if we did twelve vehicles all at once, which I do not suggest because we have vehicles that do not need to be done, that we already own, why would we get rid of it? And we still have plenty of great miles left on those vehicles. I, I don't suggest it, but that would be a total cost of two million, eight hundred, or eight thousand, yes.
Of these options, you guys have got the lead with it. We're just here to, to see if we can accommodate what you need. Which is your best option? One?
One is the best option because it's cheaper for the county. It's cheaper for the taxpayer. And we know that every, every year, we're getting four new vehicles. So in year four, the first four are gone. We can trade those in. The good thing is, even though on that big price tag, you see the two twenty-six, we can utilize some of the equipment that we have that would reduce that cost. So when we trade those first four in for the, for the new lease, those vehicles that we trade in, we can utilize that equipment. Again, the equipment that is utilized, that can be utilized, obviously, if there's a change in the vehicle or something's broke or it doesn't fit in that vehicle anymore, obviously that wouldn't work. But for the most part, consoles are, can be pretty, you know, universal. Our computer mounts are universal. We can use those again. Obviously, radars, lights, if they're still working and there's a problem with the light, we can always reuse those again. It reduces that cost. That's the high number, but, but we didn't want to.
Financially though, you, you, do we have, do you have those kinds of funds?
Do we and ours?
In your account?
We do not have.
So the, the proposal, Nick, is, you go ahead.
Your question.
I mean, there's two funds that they went to Sheila about. One is jail housing and one is lit drag. And I think the big question I had was whether or not, you know, we clearly want to keep a balance in lit because of future planning for it. I think that's the recommendation of the Sheriff's Department. So four nine oh six, and you've got the balance on that, don't you?
Two hundred and sixty-eight.
Two hundred and.
It's two hundred, right at two hundred thousand in the one seventy fund and two hundred and sixty-eight in the jail housing fund.
When I asked the question, that was, that looked like the best option based on trying to keep something there for future planning, but that's just me.
Well, I mean, you, you, you're the liaison. You've sat and talked with them.
I, I have talked to them.
How you feel about this?
I certainly, you know, one, I guess what captured me is, is they've got four more people on the road than, than when this rotation was started. And I think that something's going to be half, something's got to be done or the vehicles are going to be outused before we can replace them.
Well, this is my thing. I would never want to see an officer out on the road in something that was not roadworthy. I mean, maybe we could make it live. We cannot. We get one of our officers targeted out, that would be a tragedy. Unbeknownst measure.
And in, and in two thousand and sixteen, which we don't want to recreate the problem that we had in two thousand and sixteen, which was in two years' time, the county had to pay over a million dollars to fix the vehicle rotation issue that existed in two thousand and sixteen. We're approaching the same issue again, and I don't want to see that happen. We had officers that had to sign waivers that they would not sue the county because of the vehicles they were driving. Now, that's not only a burden to the county and to the officer, but about every single person he passes when he's going a hundred miles or saves him.
Absolutely.
What about the warranty on these?
They would fall under the warranty of the, of the lease. So they would still fall under the warranty. The first one's the thirty-six thousand mile all-around warranty. And then the drivetrain, which in police vehicles, we're tough on drivetrain. We go from zero to extreme speeds, right back down to nothing and right back again, over and over. The drivetrain has to have, has to be a tough one because we're going to, we're going to put it to the test. Luckily, this would keep us within that range. Most likely, without, if we were out of it, it would be for a very short window and then the lease would end. That vehicle would be done. We'd be getting the new lease to start and those vehicles would be replaced.
It's a hundred thousand off drivetrain.
Which is what, we want to keep the, the rotation at around a hundred thousand miles because we'd get more in return when we turn those vehicles back in. We stay within that warranty of the drivetrain. And then we're also doing things here recently that we, we have in our plans. It's also included in the quotes that, that you have from John Jones that I provided you. Some of the equipment that we're, we're changing that's going to save the county money. We're getting away from push bumpers because sometimes they're not compatible. It costs a lot of money to put a push bumper on a vehicle. We're taking off light bars on top and just doing interior lights because light bars are thousands, they're, they're absurd costs. We're doing a simpler sticker decal package. Instead of paying four hundred and fifty dollars, we're looking at more around seventy-five dollars. Simpler things that try to cut where we can, just as, just a pinch of penny, but we still got to have the car.
Matt, the auditor can, financially, is this feasible?
If you're utilizing the jail housing funds, the, the eighty thousand that was originally requested, I, I, my recommendation is to give them the eighty thousand. Do not sign the resolution. They will not have the money to pay them back with the initial increases. Plus, that two hundred thousand will be reserved there to either help if there's additional expenses on this or other emergencies that come up. So I, I think the resolution to pay back the fund should not be agreed to tonight. Allow them that eighty thousand. We already know it's higher than what they've had and they've paid some of it already. And then they might have to come back to you for some of the difference, again, either out of the jail housing or, or their cash balance that they have in the eleven seventy fund. But that eleven seventy cash balance, is any emergencies or anything that might be added increases in cost? You already know there, you know, they had eight thousand, it's a hundred and some dollars, I think it was, like in their meals that they were short and, and had to do transfers in order to pay it. You guys paid for fuel last year out of your riverboat fund. I would say probably by July, August, you're going to have to be doing that, not just for the Sheriff's Department. So, so that will allow them to have that two hundred thousand there in an emergency situation. But long-term, you'll want to be looking at their meals and, and the mileage or the fuel cost for everybody across the board, not just them, to help them reserve their cash balances.
So I'm hearing nationally, inflation's went down some as far as food costs and things. Are you guys seeing any effect?
So one of the things that, this is just a perspective of one item. We were paying twenty-five dollars for a case of eggs. Don't ask me what a case is. I'm just being given the information by our major. We're paying sixty-nine dollars for, per case now. Now, we have went into agreements with other counties when they make an order that we are jumping on board with other counties to try to get things cheaper because they order in such larger masses than we do. And if we have to go pick that up, then that's fine. We go pick that up. But it's, it's saving us from having to pay a larger delivery fee because we're getting smaller amounts compared to some other counties that have larger jails and larger population than we do. Are we going to run out of money for food? Probably. You know, right now, thank goodness, our inmate population is really low. We're right around the forty inmates versus the sixty, which, which really helps. But with the cost that's gone up in, in a lot of these items, it hurts. You, you can't budget for those types of increases. You have no idea that it's going to go up that much. And I, I'm no different for when you go to the store or you go to the store. I mean, you know, you have a budget and then you go in and you're like, well, that's going to cost a lot more. I'm not going to be able to buy that anymore. Unfortunately, we're just doing a larger scale.
Sheriff, what do you, on these leases, this is a one-year lease. We're not signing a ten-year blanket that says we're guaranteed that we're going to do this year.
You know, this is a, this would be, each four vehicles would be a different lease.
Different.
So year one would be seventy-five thousand, year two, a hundred and fifty thousand, paying.
Really?
Uh, our two leases.
I'm only asking because if it doesn't work and goes bankrupt, we wouldn't want to be locked in at ten years or so.
No, we're not locked into ten years. We're just locked into the agreement of each lease.
Each lease is a three-year.
A separate blanket. Right. Now, with the eighty thousand appropriation, we would, we would easily be able to cover the four-year, the four years with what Sheila just discussed of what was in the, let me out the numbers. Yeah, the, eleven seventy.
Eleven seventy.
That surplus that's in there would easily cover it for the second year. And we still have money remaining if we were going to do that. And then we've got at least three years before we have to come up with a plan. How are we going to finish doing this? Is this something we're going to stick with or something we're going to ditch and come up with a new plan?
So, Madam President, in light of the information shared, I'm going to make a motion that we appropriate eighty thousand dollars out of Fund four nine zero six for the lease plan, option one, and forego the resolution.
Seconded, which made by Andy, seconded by Nick. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Carrie.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I think the second year we are.
One of the things we're going to look for when we get closer to budget time, we will be getting prices from all over the place to try to find, if we can find cheaper vehicles, what the, what the rate is at the time, because I'm sure it's going to go up to.
Maybe they have, maybe check with other sheriff departments and see what all they do too.
And a lot of them, this John Jones is the largest police vehicle dealership, I think in the, at least in the eastern part of the United States. They cover thirty-nine states.
As far as the last guy.
Down to Salem. In Salem, Indiana. Yeah, Salem, that's the police.
Keep your thumb on it because, I mean, ultimately, you know, when it comes to the, the food, the fuel, we're going to be coming to you guys first and saying, it's your budget, where it's at. So any, any place you can save helps us all out.
Maybe put some chicken in the store juice or something.
Chicken, the store chicken.
All right. We need to address the, the other three additional appropriations. Kate Kathleen isn't here this evening. Her two requests were for the statewide nine-one-one perf in the amount of nine hundred and thirty-five dollars. And the second one was six hundred and sixty-five dollars from nine-one-one to the, from the cash balance to PICA.
I shall move the request.
Question made. Is there a second? Seconded by Steve. Any questions? All those in favor? Let's carry. Okay, now our last one is what the Justice Partners to the contract services?
When we did the budget last time, we didn't think there was going to be another Justice Partners grant. And we found out like in September that there was, which was after the budget period. So we got that grant and we just need a budget, I mean, it, it just needs, the money is in ninety-one fifty-three. Actually, there's ninety thousand dollars in there. It just needs to be how they budget.
Anybody want to make the motion?
So is it just to accept and approve the, a, a budget line?
Yeah, because well, it's like in, you know, when we come in August, we have all the funds of what the budget is. We didn't give you one because we didn't think there was going to be another year of that. There is one now. So we've put all the money into the appropriation. She's just wanting to put it all in contract services. So it's just in one line.
So moved.
Question made. Is there a second?
Yeah.
Which made by Andy, same to my girl. Any other questions? All those in favor? Let's carry. Okay, hereby, I think carrying on to new business. Okay, transfer request. And Kathleen presented a transfer of funds from part-time wages out of the PSAP twelve thirty-five fund to the part-time wages in the statewide nine-one-one fund. Again, that is to be used from the part-time to overtime line item to help with the balances and the overtimes. Is that what she was talking about, that she, she can't get part-time, they can't, they want that put on other?
Does that fund for?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Again, she gets her monthly amounts that come in that support her budget, that she has cash balances in both funds as well.
And she has two requests here for us? Just one for six hundred and thirty-five dollars.
We already done that.
We did that. Ten thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight. I make a motion if we grant that.
Which made by Nick. Is there a second?
I'll second that request.
Seconded by Andy. Any questions? All those in favor? Let's carry. Okay, well, it was supposed to be Marcy with the ready grant, but I do not think her. You heard anything? To you and Sheila. Auditor employee request.
I had originally sent out, we did a employee job description change back in twenty-one that was like an overall that was going to help with the, the settlement and properties and kind of a backup. Since then, in discussion with Anton, and because we're wanting to bring somebody in to help with payroll and, and HR and, and being that second position in there that we had lost, that is the request, is using that job description for the payroll deputy's position. And, and again, it's payroll and benefits. And they will be in that position assisting with it. Plus, they will also be cross-trained in the other three positions in the office to help alleviate some of the, the comp time and get the vacation and personal time in for our, our staff to be able to use as well. There was, as you know, the, the last commissioner's meeting, discussion on, on trying to get a time management system in. Again, accountability, some kind of, of managed clock, time clock system is, is again, something that is being looked at. In the meeting, there was the right stuff that is, is some of the, one of the new companies. Since then, there's also been an updated information with Paycor. I think, again, the commissioners would be the ones that would do the contracting for that, that would help assist with the payroll positions and be able to have time cards in the accountability and the management system, which is something that the council and commissioner have all agreed. We, we need some kind of an accountability system. Is that correct? Again, we, we've talked with the council, we've talked with them. I think we need to call a meeting and.
Sheila, will you give me just a quick passing now?
Okay.
You as the council.
Yes.
I've had another, had another call with Paycor last week. They sent me out another quote today. This was a complete payroll package, time management, HR, payroll, everything. It's all wrote down here for us. They basically went back, we were to the point of implementation a couple of years ago. Is that correct, Sheila? A few years ago?
Yes.
And of course, we had an issue with it, working with Lao. Since then, I've talked to Sheila. They are willing, because of the abuse with their office and, and the workload, to do the general ledger by hand. I checked with Paycor, talked to Kristy Housman. She's the sales rep for this, and she said it's roughly about three hours max per page, all it takes. All it takes. So that frees up a bulk load of time for somebody in that office. And this includes HR, eight time machines. And it basically uses the same type of cars that we're using now. Rollerweight cars that we use for the security passes, the entry. They can implement those type of cars into the system.
This is a company that we had looked at like two years ago. Sheila had given up an employee, so the finance would be available. But it didn't fly, uh,
because it didn't work with the Lao system. The general ledger would not work. What they do is, and Sheila's aware of this, they print out a payroll, and at the end of payroll, they spit out a general ledger sheet of all the transactions that is emailed to her office, and they literally put that entry in and extract those figures out of the Lao financial system. And it takes about three hours every two weeks.
Okay, but the cost for this Paycor is in thirty-five thousand?
If you look at the very back page, if you break it down, if it gets included, they give us an initial discount, the first year it's twenty-eight thousand ninety-two dollars for everything. Time management, onboarding, benefits, HR, and the HR is also email, and it's also live. You can pick up the phone and call.
But Gary, if we drop them after the first year, is there any?
There is none.
Nothing over to do? We would own time change and.
Correct.
Okay.
Here's my question.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Here's my question. We invest in something like this, is it going to once and for all solve our time management issues as far as comp?
Absolutely. If there's no way.
I'm just gonna say this, if, if it does, then we're money ahead.
Way.
Way.
And I didn't mean to take over Sheila's time here, cuz her and I have talked about this exclusively. Uh, she, she says she's concrete, ready to make a move with this thing to help her department out. You got some department heads here, I mean, I think you need to, to, you know, check. Obviously, it's not been voted on at commissioners, it's just something we need to bring out to the table. We're all discussing. We've discussed this a lot, but we know what it's costing the county. And I spoke with Sheila, and we don't have a department in the county that figures time the same way. That's horrible.
It's gonna take policy. It's gonna take policy to go, this is a functionality tool. It's gonna take policy to enforce it.
The best way to enforce is they don't punch in with their card, they're not gonna get paid.
Well, I understand that, but what I'm, what I'm saying is if you got different, if you've got different managers that aren't on the same wavelength, then it has to be in print and enforceable to, to, to be able to manage it because, I mean, anybody can give her or punch in the individual numbers of their employees and still do it in a different way.
It's electronic card. There's nothing to punch in, there's no thumbprint, any of that stuff. So, Sheila has told me that we're supposed to round to the nearest quarter of an hour. Is that correct? Is that what you said? We have departments figuring to the minute. So we have policy. But since we don't have a time machine, this will already be set up that way. Automatic, once, once our employees come in and punch in, it's gone. It's out of the department's hands and goes straight to Paycor. Okay? Or whatever company that we're gonna pick to choose to use. So, nobody can manipulate a time sheet. Nobody can take a time card and say, well, they worked a minute here, so I'm gonna put that down as an extra ten minutes. Doesn't work that way. None of that can be done anymore.
Sheila, how, how you got to do it now then?
There are covered, there are submitted with individual time sheets that, for each of the employees. And again, the policies, there, there's policy somewhere that says to the quarter of an hour, but again, people aren't doing it. I have had a couple of conversations today with other departments, and, and they haven't been putting to that minute or, or to that. So, this would take the load off of them because it is figured to that minute. It is figured to that exact time, um, versus, you know, what they're doing. And we also talked in budget hearings, we, we go to the third decimal. And, and ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, that third decimal will, will work as far as the same numbers, but if, if it's off a penny here or there, there's an adjustment that has to make. So the payroll deputy literally has to look at the time sheets that are turned in and figure them based on to that third. I think it was forty-five hundred dollars that if we had gone from the third digit to the second decimal and figuring, but the employees are still. It is, but, but I feel the employees should get every minute that they're working. It shouldn't be the quarter of an hour or whatever. They, it should be, and right now, it needs to be made up.
According to the Department of Labor, it is supposed to be.
Yes.
Yeah, that is a new rule coming into effect that you cannot round up or round down. That'll come into effect, I think, this year, maybe next year. And that's for all businesses. And a company like, in, any of these are going to have federal policy worked in to, to this. But I'm, you know, as far as day-to-day operations, I get it. But these, these comp time balances, I, I just feel like there's got to be, so, you know. Statutory guidance to go along with it. If we're going to work it down, and you're telling me you can, but, you know, I think the two go hand in hand.
Oh, absolutely. And, and, and I'm, I'm not doing this for me, I'm doing it for taxpayers only. County, we're, we're losing thousands of dollars a year. As you know, Andy, we've had this discussion for four years. You know, we could, we have a half a million dollars in PTO in comp time and overtime, and I think we're probably still pretty close to that.
Sheila, if we went with this here, and I hate to put you on the spot because, but if we went with this, and if you, if we okay your helper in your department, which we took away again with, would you need your other helper? Would you need your other thing with this so that they can coordinate this and keep track of our comp time and all that?
I think we need both.
But I, I, you think we, you need both, and can we afford it?
For two years, we've talked about time management and vacation and personal and comp time balances and what it's costing them out. So the accountability and clocks or, or whatever system that is used, I think, is going to help. And again, to the minute, not somebody rounding off quarterly, not to the third digit, whatever. I, I think that that is getting it in there. And it's gonna be a lot easier based on the reports that Paycor is willing to print out and, and provide on the entry or the data part of it. And yes, that would be something that, that the second position would be required to be monitoring because you're still gonna have that first position that is entering the same daily payroll. Even if it's a three-hour process, you still have, again, you still have HR, you still have new employees and, and employees leaving. There's always something that is constant. One person cannot do it. We tried when we originally asked for Paycor in February or March of twenty-one. Because the county was broke, we said we'll try it. We've proven, gone through three payroll deputies, that just, again, it is a workload. And, and if it, and because I do not have a backup in there, it, it, we have to. Last week was a prime example, and, and I want to publicly say thank you to Chris Lunsford for loaning a sharing. We, we only had one major issue and, and, and got it fixed, we think. But again, there, there's no backup. There's, and so you're looking at two different things. I desperately need an employee that I lost when, you know, when, when this was originally discussed. We're still two years later talking about all the money that we're losing. Whether it's Paycor, the commissioner's meeting, we were talking about right stuff. You know, we have found, I have received a couple more emails that says if I only have one employee, it is not the right program to have because it is more involved. It's also twice as much as what the Paycor is. I'm not saying.
Sheila, if I'm correct, if I'm wrong, and I've done some research on them, that is time management only. They do not do any payroll service. So, and what we've checked into is a quote of about forty thousand dollars for time management. That makes no sense when we get the whole package for the first year for twenty-eight, correct? Time management, onboarding, and here the insurance, all that stuff through payroll.
Matt, did you have something?
Yes, Stephen asked how, how, uh, Sheila, that's payroll. Just to give you an idea of, from a department side of it, on, on time sheet day, you know, the employees go through, they fill their time sheet out. They constantly make mistakes. I mean, that's just how, they're calculating their overtime, they're calculating this a holiday, they're calculating their comp time, whatever it is. They fill that out, that gets started into a supervisor. Supervisor sits for hours and verifies what they wrote down with the schedule and when they logged it on the radio or whatever else, to verify the hours they put down were actually physically worked. Once they verify all those and look for some mistakes, then they push that off to the secretary. The secretary that looks at it, goes through and tries to make sure that, uh, again, the calculations were correct for overtime and whatever else. She makes some adjustments and puts, enters that into a spreadsheet for the auditor's office, and then gets sent to the auditor's office, and the payroll clerk sits and does the same thing. It's, it's so many steps into it that it's wasting so much time. The deputies don't have to sit and try to scratch their heads, cuz I mean, you know, they're not mathematicians here, most of them. So, sit here and try to figure this out and spend time, that's, that's time they can be out doing something else. The supervisors will spend hours sitting there trying to decipher the chicken scratches on these things. That's time they can be out doing their jobs, doing something else. And God knows, if Donna was sitting here, um, our secretary, um, she would probably be down begging you guys for it because it would save so much time for her. And time that she's on the phone with the auditor's office every payroll day, trying to make sure that everything's squared up between the two of them, and that's just our department. I know the phones are getting off the hook from every other department, so.
Being the newbie out here, I'm actually shocked that we don't already do this, so that's really.
And that's a discussion from two years ago. Was your surprise, yeah?
And I can, and I can, and I can document this and show you. We use, I'm gonna tangent real quick. We use electronic time clock and everything for all my guys that work for me. So they clock in, clock out. I noticed the first year I switched over, how many hours less I was paying annually, to the tune of about ten thousand dollars per, or not, I'm sorry, ten thousand dollars per group. I had, ten, at that time it's five, so two thousand dollars per employee is what I was saving by switching to the electronic time clock. And it calculates to the second. The only thing that if I don't do supervisor approval, that I have to go back and do that like once a week. It's much be easier to do it daily.
When, yeah, when things are manually entered like that, it, it gets difficult. You're talking about comp time banks and things, and I mean, we're humans, we make errors. So, if you've got an employee that doesn't understand when they're entering how many hours they get for comp, but if they didn't physically work forty hours in this particular week, and it's not just, hey, I have a ten-hour shift, I worked eleven hours today, so, hey, that's, that's time and a half. I get an hour and a half for that comp. Well, you don't unless you work forty physical hours in the work week. So if they entered ten hours of comp time, that in all reality, they should only get five for, and it skips, it doesn't make it through, you know, the, the two or three different steps before it actually gets turned in, which is possible because everybody's got so much paper on their desk, you end up with comp time banks. I know for a fact, back in, when it was years ago, we had employees, part-time employees that by policy don't even get comp time or banking comp time. You know, stuff like that happens, and it's, it's easy for humans to make a mistake. I think, you know, this would free up a lot of time for all the departments and the auditor's office and streamline something that should have been streamlined a long time ago. And hopefully, in the end, yes, you know, tighten some things up and maybe save us a little bit of money.
Madam Chair.
Okay. I don't think we, we don't have nothing for voting on this, which I've been for this ever since we talked about the agenda. I was so lost in this, but I wanna make a motion that if, uh, and we've gotta put faith in Sheila, that thinks that that other person could help with this and her other work that she needs done, uh, which I know that she was behind on a lot of it from quite a while back. And I wanna make a motion to, uh, accept her request on employment for her. Do you have anybody in mind?
No, we have to go through. Her policy has to be advertised for at least five days, and by the time you do interview, so you're probably talking two or three weeks at, at best. And, and again, there's that learning curve. If, if the commissioners put this on their agenda and, and approve it, then, then they would have to come back for the financial part of it. So you're looking at March before something like this. I'm not saying that Paycor or Lao or whoever, Lao does not have a time clock. They don't have that, that part of the system. They have the data in the end of it. Something else that goes along with this as well is the way that we figure longevity. It would just be so much easier, you know what you're paying somebody for the year, just divide it out by the twelve months, pay it at one time. Same thing with the stinking holiday pay. Because, you know, you've got every quarter, you're doing holiday pay, and, and I can tell you, just about every single quarter, there has been at least one or two employees that are long gone, but we're still having to mail them the check because they were working on that holiday thing. So the holiday should be, same thing in, in streamlining with this Paycor, they're gonna get paid every two weeks like everybody else. It's not, you know, if you're here, you're here, if you're not. And so those are the things, there'll be some adjustments. I agree two hundred percent with Andy. There absolutely needs to be a policy to go along with and, and to be able to do it. But I think, again, hand in hand, that you're looking at a month before the commissioners can, can approve something and then coming back at your March meeting on, on any kind of a system, whether it's Paycor or whoever, believe in that.
Can we call it really fast? We got a motion, motion to, to.
Madam Chair, I'll second.
And by Nick.
I, I, I've got a question.
Okay.
So we got some department heads here, commissioner, and you guys have all got your ears aground in the county, so. A year and a half ago, we cut many, many more positions on top of Sheila's. I think Sheila, being in the, uh, I guess, the main operations side financially is, she and being the squeaky wheel about it has kept us abreast of, of how critical that role is. But we still cut positions from other people, and my question is, you know, are we, are we to the point where we have, we're satisfactory, we're satisfied operationally with the, each individual department based on your workload each day? You know, because once this is approved, if it's not, I'm sure we're going to hear about it. So, I, I'm just curious, you know, is, what I've heard forever, even since the position was cut, is that we're a critical mass on, on needing another person here. But, well, it's just face the facts. If, if there's some other place that's really, really hurting, we're gonna hear about it. So, I just, I just wanna kind of figure out what we're taking on here.
Good point, Andy. I think we address it in the time. I don't know, I haven't heard anything from any other department. I know that there've been two departments since we had to take a cut that has really, uh, been affected by that, and was the recorder and the auditor. We gave the treasurer a person back. I, I think this is a long overdue position for the fact that she was willing to give the money for the Paycor. The Paycor, I'd like to look at this, and if the commissioners are okay and they wanna bring it back, then we'll address this somewhere down the road. But I think with what I'm reading in the minutes and what I'm hearing, we're, we're desperate for a position to be filled in the auditor's office.
Yeah, no doubt. I, I just kind of wanted to see what the health was across. Is anybody else?
I'm agree with Matt, though. There's a lot of time that's spent on everybody's time machine. We could just go in and out, and it's already there, and it's done. Obviously, there is a lot of time that's wasted in the, double doing it in the auditor's office again.
Well, I am, um, totally on board, of course, for Sheila, cuz I know nobody, even, I mean, I know that you have, you are here almost seven days a week. And I, nobody works harder than Sheila. And you have no backup, you know, when you have someone out with, I mean, that is sick, so.
Well, I'm sure I've been watching some of the time that's been accumulated in the auditor's office, and we've, we've gotta really help her with an individual so that they can bring that down. You've got some people in there that have been those positions, and we had to pay them out. You're talking some pretty major dollars. And here we are, putting this pressure on these offices, saying that according to the personnel policy, you don't use it, you could lose it. We gave an extension, so I think this will help. I think it's, and I may know Steve stepped out for a minute, but. So, I think this will help. I think it's, and I may know Steve stepped out for a minute, but.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, I call for a vote on this.
So, um, all those in favor for Sheila's extra position? Motion carried. Hugh.
Can I make one more comment on this so we can finish this up? If you look at the bottom, this, they quoted this through March of fifteen. I know the other commissioners are in favor of this. I know Sheila's in favor of it and ninety percent of the department heads, and they're not here, but they're in favor of this. Uh, I would like to see us take this to the vote at the first commissioner's meeting, bring it back to you at your meeting in March, which is the sixth or seventh or whatever. But maybe it's the same days it is tonight, the thirteenth.
It is thirteen.
And if we can get this thing wrapped up and get this pressure from Sheila, these department heads, uh, that we can discuss this for two years. I, I'd like to put it if they move forward and start saving the taxpayers money and get some pressure off of our departments.
Sounds good to me.
Gary, I think as far as I'm concerned, this would already been working if there was that niche in it, so.
And let me make one more suggestion to keep the burden from the budget or general fund. If you give me just a second, we're talking about the dogs for the, for the sheriff department. We can talk twenty-four thousand dollars out of ARPA funds. We've had a little change in plans now. One of those dogs is getting ready to retire as a one-year-old pup that we can get for free. We're gonna make a contract with the officer in case he leaves early and he pays back so much. And with attorneys taking care of that. So, now we're down to spending eighteen thousand dollars instead of twenty-four of ARPA funds. I suggest that we take twenty-eight thousand, twenty-nine thousand dollars of additional ARPA funds that we have and pay this first-year contract at no burden to the budget whatsoever.
Be wonderful.
Yeah, I, I, my, my only caveat is, Gary, you know, I, I think that sounds great. But, until we get the personnel policy and, and the things in order, you know, as far as regulatory guidance on this to go with it, you know, I, I just, um, I think, I do think that you can't have one without the other and we just need to make sure it all jives.
I, I don't think there's gonna be a problem with that, first of all, as you said earlier. This company has got the federal guidelines, labor laws, so whatever it states, it is back like you would like to pay into the minute. Uh, that's what we're gonna do if we have to adjust our policy.
Okay, let, let me rephrase it then. We have had people carrying balances in, in different ways, okay? We have sat in the past, okay, well, they're gonna have this long to get it down to here and this long to get it down to here and this long to get it down here. It's never worked.
Yeah, those policies of the council because they have dollar amounts that ties to it.
No, I, and I understand that, but what I'm telling you is, um, there, there, there needs to be a, a, somebody with a legal education to make sure that this stuff is, unless you want one of us writing it out and, and saying it, but I, I don't think you probably do. So, in the past, Jim had put all that into, um, you know, some type of, yeah, verbiage and, and, and it just needs to be looked at, um, by a legal set of eyes to, to make sure that it jives.
Are you still happy with the three hundred and fifty hours? Are you letting everybody carry or you gonna change, are you wanting to change that? Is that where you're looking at?
I, I, you know, in the past, we'd had some, um, work sessions to, to kinda review where everybody was at and then what kinda actions, um, we wanted to take. Now, I'm not gonna speak for the president, but if, if that's necessary in order to, to finally get us on the right track, then I would cer- certainly support any recommendation she would have regarding it, um, and, and anybody else, but that's.
And I agree with you. We got some policy issues that we need to change, but I don't think that stops us from getting.
No, it, it absolutely doesn't. There, there's one, one is absolutely positive and I'm not saying it's not, but I just, I just.
We need to work together to figure out which direction we wanna go. If you want to maintain the hours that we have, if we want to cut those back, uh, yeah, there's, there's some discussion there. Uh, I, I agree with you a hundred percent, always has.
Well, I believe, like, in that software system, there's limits that can be set.
Sure.
So, they're set at all. If you want comp time to stop here, it stops.
I just think we need to work together to figure out what those numbers are.
Right, that's what.
And one last thing, I'm, I'll be done with this. This comes with a phone app for all of our employees. They can check their comp time, their PTO, uh, the sheriff department can punch in and out from their location. So, all those things are available with this, so we're not taking anything away. Donna asked me about that with her probation people. They'll have that access too. So, all that's included in this package.
Shows locations.
Oh, where is it?
Dusty.
I just said, I agree. Andy's a hundred percent right. When this, let's say we do implement this, great thing. That policy's gonna have to be ready when it gets implemented.
Right.
When can we clock in? Can we clock in ten minutes early every day? Can we clock in three minutes early?
Well, the software can be set up, so if they clock in, they got either a, they clock in at seven thirty.
Absolutely. Sheila can be set up.
It can set it up wherever.
It's got all different parameters. We also have to communicate that to vehicles that work here that are used to.
That's part of the implementation package through Sheila's office. Right now, she's saying our policy's fifteen minutes. Okay, so if you come in for detail, you're here at eight o'clock.
Okay.
If you think.
Perfect.
And that's the way it should be.
Yeah, absolutely. We're just gonna have to communicate as well.
We fine-tune it.
So, but then some offices that work twenty-four seven, it's just on.
Correct, you're in and out. So, you've got four hours shifts. I, we, I, we're, it does that, they have a time clock out there. They don't come in and pile snow for a morning. They can hit their car and they're in. The only person that can approve, and I keep talking because they're asking me questions here. Comp time can only be approved by the department head. It's the only one that can call this company and say, I got four hours of comp time. It's verified by the department head, not an employee. Employee cannot call that in. And it's not, Sheila can say the payroll person, and that's the person that can do it, Sheila can't do it, payroll person can, or whoever she says in her department. But there's only one person that has the authority to do that.
Dude.
You may have, you may have already answered this question and, um, but, I mean, you were talking about being able to check in with the phone app. I mean, what's gonna keep people from doing that?
They can't, obviously, everybody will have their own code. So, if you wanna check in, see how much you got paid, you can do that like we do now, if you wanna go to the bank and get online. If you wanna see how many personal days you have available, of course, that doesn't work for.
She's, she's saying what?
They still personally have to swipe.
They have to.
Okay, that was my question.
Oh, yeah, they have, they have to present that.
So, you can't check in with the phone app and be, you know, where.
No, no.
Okay, that's.
The only ones that can will be the departments that require.
Then you can set up individuals, like, I can clock in right now, so even for myself. Anyway, but it's GPS located and gives actual location where they're supposed to be and where they clock in at.
So, like, Brian said earlier, Matt, you can't have an employee logging into Green County because the GPS activated. They shouldn't be in Green County clocking in. They should be on their way to their route or whatever it is that they've got scheduled, so.
Madam Chair, I think the next thing on the agenda is the salary orders.
We are.
We gotta, we gotta finish this. Okay, you have to do an additional appropriation from the county general fund that we have to do an advertisement for and hold the public hearing at the March council meeting. At the same time, if the commissioners proceed with their side of it and approve it at their meeting, you can do the additional appropriation for that as well. That will not be effective for the system, unfortunately, until your April meeting. But this one, I need a dollar amount on, um, the, the base for the position. Again, if we're, we're going with the payroll and benefits ends of things, that's the amount that needs to be advertised. So, you need to either amend your motion or make another motion to, to advertise for a public hearing for the annual salary.
Do we have, I mean, we have to come up with a specific amount for us?
Which is, again, we had the base that was on there at the eighteen, eight thirteen. Um, there'll be some variables in the levels and the longevities, so, I, you can say up to a dollar amount. Um, but this eighteen, eight thirteen an hour times eighteen hundred and twenty hours and, um, that we, we need to figure. So, if the motion could say if they, if I work with Nicole in the morning and we come up with the exact dollar amount, not to exceed, um, we can, we can get pretty close. So, it's thirty-four, two thirty-nine, sixty-six, if that's a base rate. So, if you say thirty-four.
Two sixty-nine.
Two sixty-nine. Two thirty-nine, sixty-six.
Then we need to put that in a motion so that it's advertised. And where are we gonna take it out of county general? Okay, so those are motions, uh, at the, at the price of thirty-four, two thirty-nine, sixty-six.
Do we want to keep it at that amount or do a, a, or?
I would round it off to thirty-five thousand. That'll give us a couple because there is a level policy or a level amount in there too. And we'll have to check and, and see what the total is and something I can work with Nicole on.
I put that in a motion for appropriation, for advertising out of the general fund.
Up to?
Thirty-five thousand dollars, yes.
Okay. Motion's been made. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Andy. Any questions? All those in favor? Motion carried.
I'm sorry, Sheila, I got the card.
It's good.
We got you the person, but we didn't get you the payment.
I'm gonna make a motion that within thirty days of the contract date of the new payroll system that ourselves, the commissioners, and attorney and any department head that wants to, to be in here for a work session, meet, fine-tune, um, the, uh, policy.
So, motion's been made by Andy. We have a work session.
That's a good motion, I'll say.
That's a good, seconded by Nick. Any other questions? We wanna pick a date or we just wanna put the?
Within thirty days. I don't know when they're gonna buy it, so.
All right. All those in favors? Motion carried. Okay. And we are tabling the salary ordinance confirmation summaries.
We are tabling?
Till next, um, till our March meeting. Okay. Let's get officials and department head comments.
Yeah, I was gonna add Christine.
Yep, well, that's where.
I'm sorry, last meeting, I had a family emergency and I had to skip out on ya, so.
By the way, how's she doing?
She's doing much better, so. She's given me a quite few scares this year. She needs to calm down.
Good, Natalie.
I will.
Thank you, Christine.
Okay, so this is for, um, the environmentalist position. It is to get a cross-trained backup for John. And what this person would do is, um, it's probably gonna take a good year for this person to get to where John's at. To be with John, to, um, work alongside of him and to get everything in his office in order. So, um, we do have the money to fund the position. I put that on the back of the, it's on the back page. We could basically fund that position for four years. So, I mean, I, we wouldn't have to, but we could, you know, need to. It's just, there's no one else trained, so when John is out or, you know, takes a vacation or whatever, his, his job's on hold. People can't do anything, so.
Is this job gonna fall under, uh, his job description? So, same, same ass?
Same ass.
Okay.
So, basically, you have the funding to train somebody.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I, I assume that all your health funds are still pretty healthy.
Oh, yeah.
Man, I, I, oh, I was just gonna say, I, I felt like this is the meat for, for quite some time cause he's got a lot of knowledge of, that he needs to, right, Sheila? That he needs to share if he ever wants to retire, somebody's gonna have to.
I'm gonna make a motion, Madam President, that we approve, um, thirty-six thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars and ninety-two cents as the established annual salary, um, for the said environmental physician. Um, and is there a specific line that that belongs to?
I would like that to come out, um, our, the salary to be put in the, um, forty-nine eleven fund and we'll have to do additional preparations. So, to move that money from where it's at.
To, to that.
To the fund.
And I'll, um, add that verbiage, um, to it.
The motion's been made by Andy. Your second? Seconded by Earl. Is there any questions?
Any verbiage, Andy? Was that to advertise to?
Uh, yes, to advertise, yes. Thank you, thank you, Nick.
Oh, you're welcome. How long is this a full-time position? Like, two years, three years, four years?
Well, I can fund it up to four years if, if I had to.
So, it goes away if she can no longer fund it?
Right, or the position.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam President, there was some back and forth about Dusty and a, uh, meeting this week, I think Thursday.
Thursday.
Yes.
Yeah, so.
We're gonna, yeah, give it a little bit.
Thursday, I, I came basically to say, I'll see y'all Thursday. And if you can't make it, get ahold of me. I'd like to show you this in the presentation I put together. Talks about the taxes, assess rates and how it's all changed, uh, and what that means essentially. Everybody got an email. I may or may not have got you the email. It's, it's Thursday at two o'clock right here. That's what that is.
We talked to Basler about that the other day, about, uh.
Are you bringing?
The assessments and.
Well, I'm bringing news. Nobody ever likes the assessor's news. You know, truth is, we ain't there yet. That's what I'm bringing. But I'm showing, there's a lot of that in there to look at and it, it kind of explains the assess values that went up crazy, but they're going up everywhere. Our, our, uh, tax rates lowered twenty cents almost across the board, which is a huge amount. So, with that going up and that going down, you don't really know what the taxes are gonna look like. And I'm hoping to help you, help show you what they're gonna look like.
So, we're probably gonna field a lot of questions.
Everybody, everybody's gonna talk about it. Right now, there's, um, over forty-one different bills, uh, in the courthouse in the state to try to help the tax burden. I know a couple of you went to the, the county's.
We talked to Mr. Basler. He, he couldn't even tell us himself. I says, you know, that's great that the taxes, we can get the taxes up to where market value, but we've gotta get this rate down. And he didn't have any idea of where it was coming from.
Yeah, and then, then it, it's hard and, and, you know, the, the whole tax thing, yeah, some are going up and not very many are going down. Did they ever go down? That's what it's helping, you know? That's how it works. The higher that goes, the lower that rate goes. So, then it's, okay, who's gonna pay what? Well, I hope to explain that a little bit, I guess. I've got a whole bunch of that to put together.
Good.
Talking point.
What time, Thursday?
Two, two o'clock.
Two o'clock?
Thursday, right here. Couple of other things, wanna just, uh, throw this out there. I'll probably be, I'm trying to figure out what we're gonna do. I need to, I really need another person. I'm kinda planting that seed now. Uh, one way or another, uh, we, I have a, a gal that's pregnant. She'll be off this year, uh, for an extended period of time and, and we're already short, uh, we're, we're staff short already. I'm hoping to squeeze through till next year, uh, on that, but I, with, I don't know what we're gonna do here. Uh, maybe a temporary thing, uh, I could hire a temp while she's gone, but I don't.
Did Sheila pay you to say this after her vote?
No, you know what? I, I wanted to say that, but she needs it and I know she needs it. She needs it as bad as anybody needs it. And I wasn't gonna say it before, out of knowing how much I'd bug her, come down there and those girls are moving around and they're learning their jobs, just like our whole office is. I've been working close together right now. Uh, I've been working close together right now in mobile homes. We're trying to get them done just to, trying to get them done early now. We're kinda learning how to do them and they're, the girls are and we're gonna pass it along to her gal and then she's gonna learn how to do it. Well, we're gonna try to do it all early enough to where everybody can work together, so I, they need to help. I, I wouldn't have said it until after, so that's my thought. So I'm gonna talk about that, I wanna talk about Eagle View. So I had a, uh, I've got actual numbers, I plan on having them fly over the county in the fall. We did a little bit of changes, I talked about it in the budget, this is really just a recap. But we have a program, it changed, but I picked them up pretty hard, so I still got the numbers down. You guys approved the, the dollar amount, I'll bring the contracts, I'll show it, but, uh, we're moving forward with it. I requested, uh, Eagle View and, uh, basically the change finder, which lays the, our, the new map over the old map. Well, they have another, uh, program that's, it's, still get the Eagle View and it goes into everybody and everybody can use it. Uh, but it, it takes our, uh, uh, sketches out of our system of everybody's property card and it'll lay it over that new map. So we'll get a list of everything that's even within a foot difference. So we're gonna clean up the whole county essentially and, and, uh, it'll, it may take us three years to do it, but.
May I make a suggestion?
Yes, sir.
I would like for you to come up with a good playbook.
It's on the computer.
I know, but there's lots of people that, that, it would help, I mean, charge the right price for it.
Yeah.
You know, what to do, there'd be a lot of people buying them.
Yeah, we need about four people.
A good playbook.
Just build.
We haven't had a playbook in this county in.
Yeah.
Years.
Yep.
A good one.
I agree.
Thank you about that.
Yeah, I'll look into it anyways. We're not the staff to do it though. Not, I mean, I know we won't, I, I don't know what all that.
Or maybe some company might.
Yeah, I don't know.
I mean, yeah, we put it in hard print though and people are splitting property every day.
It's a moving target, that, that's another part of that presentation is, uh, assessment's not a difficult game. It takes us four years to get through the whole county. So at any given time, you know, it, it, we're best one, one quarter at a time.
Yeah.
Uh, but it's a moving target.
Another priority that he's trying to do with this meeting on Thursday is so that the seven council people, the commissioners, the auditor, the treasurers and, and the recorders, because you have almost all three of those steps in any process that you're doing down there so that everybody understands the same thing and they can explain to the public, not say, well, go talk to the assessor, they're the ones who did it.
Oh, yeah.
This is a state-driven amounts that, that are being put out there. So the better everybody understands it and can explain and not, you're gonna blame anybody, let's blame the state because it is their numbers, but everybody needs to understand, so you can talk to the people in your community or we're not saying, you know, go back down the hallway and talk to Dusty, 'cause it, it doesn't matter.
And everybody's more than welcome to come down the hallway and talk to Dusty, 'cause I'll, I'll talk.
Well, is this gonna be an hour, I mean, what do you?
I think I can get through it in an hour. I was in the, I, I talked to the treasurer's office, took me an hour and a half, but I think I can get it done in an hour.
You're gonna have a coffee course.
No, it's bring your own. And me one. Bring your own and me one.
I have to leave the three.
Now, I think we.
I, I, I've got a job.
We should be done in plenty of time. Then I'll probably breeze through it, there's just a lot of data, but I'm gonna kind of walk through it just to show you some actual sales and sales prices and show the market. I mean, it, it's, it's here.
But the thing of it is, it really is, we know last year was one of those years. But if we go into a recession, this whole thing could flip, it'll fall dead, yes, yes, yes.
It's not going to, and I'll show you the data why, but yeah, yeah, if and when it goes down.
Supply and demand.
Yeah.
Supply and demand, an interest.
There's a whole slide in my presentation about the demand that is.
If you look at the millennial age group that's buying houses, that needs houses, that are first-time home buyers, that group is the largest population ever, ever in this country. And those are the people buying houses.
One other thing, and then I'll leave you on them. I should've said yes to Sheila last week and I didn't know if I could make it tonight about my additional purse creation for the five thousand whatever. I'll come back at some point and ask, and I'm gonna throw that out there while I'm up here, while I got the microphone and say I'll be back and asking for money.
No coffee.
I might bring on coffee.
You sure don't have a gun.
I'll, I'll, I'll make sure the coffee pot in my office is full.
There you go, there you go.
Okay, are there any other elected officials or department heads that want to?
Well, we went to meeting this week, man, Pauline, I looked a pod bit and they had a lot of things on the charge of voting on the state house stuff, so, and, uh, it was very interesting. Everybody gets a chance to go, they need to go.
There's a lot of stuff laying on the legislature tables that if it's approved, will be effective July the first. I think the most important one is the highway. Um, they're wanting to, to combine or, or to fix it so that their funds aren't as tied up for the eleven seventy-six and eleven seventy-three.
Three, drive seventy-three down to forty percent, seventy-five percent, which will be a huge help.
Okay, I make a motion.
I have, no, I got one.
You got it.
Yeah, so today, we received four emails, um, from a, from a public individual that wanted stuff read into the record tonight. We didn't receive them until today, I did make you copies in your packets. Um, just want on the record that you did receive them. Uh, there was not enough time for Polly or any of you to review them or to comment on them or present them, but I do wanna make sure that you do have the four of them. Um, it's something that she'll have to make contact with the attorney on and on how to proceed, but you do have copies of, of her request.
Okay, I read it. Sheila wanted it read into the minutes?
She had requested that portions of them to be read into the minutes. However, because they were just received today, I don't, you guys haven't even had a time to look at them, so if you're gonna consider reading them into the minutes and addressing them, I think you at least should.
And our attorney with you.
You provided us with a copy, can we take it under advisement?
Sheila, did, she sending them to the attorney?
He did receive them as well, um, just, again, they, some of them were received just before the meeting, some of them were received, I think one was late last evening, but you can take them under advisement.
I wanna make a motion that, um, that these have been provided to us and that we, uh, take the contents of it under advisement.
Motion made by Andy, Andy, second. Seconded by Steve, any other questions?
I think, I, I would like to have the county attorney to give us.
Well, I, I think, I, I think there are, you, you, he has been furnished a copy of these, correct? Okay.
Yeah.
She needs good records.
All those in favor? Motion carried. Okay, all right, any other comments?
There's no, Nick, I assure you that they're all being dealt with.
I appreciate it. And I'm not against, I don't, I mean, I don't know if I've ever met a lady, but, um, I don't wanna start something that, you know, this need to be legal. I make a motion to, thank you, Sheila. Sheila wrote that and you're like, are you ready? Yeah, let's go on.
Wasn't quite, it's been a little while now, but.